Right time machine.
What?
It's hidden. I'm sorry.
Other order eighteen thirty-one. Me being this start, let me get off this page here. I'm sorry. I was trying to take change the time on my computer seeing our computer person doesn't know how to properly put the time on there. And I wouldn't know who that was or not.
Be careful. Back to pen paper.
Okay, uh, flag salute.
Congratulations to the United States of America. One nation under God.
A roll call. Let's start at the end of the paper, please. Grant's there. Oh, well, I was just Grant.
Yes.
Suzie. Michael.
Brother.
And Neil. No, okay, uh, Neil excuse, and I am here. Okay. Uh, additions and deletions. Uh, we need to have a motion to prove to move this to the uh, new bit, new business.
Yep.
New business. This is for superintendent to travel.
No, this is, this is a, yeah, this is a, this is an, we need to add a travel, a trip that the basketball team needs to take before we.
Oops, wrong one. Yeah, different things in my mind. Okay, so to move, so that the basketball team can take it out of district trip. Who do approve the addition to the agenda?
Second.
So moved. Oh. Okay, yep, so moved.
Oh, yeah, take a bow. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bummer is approved.
We got it, yeah.
We.
I had that one when I see out of state trip.
I know.
That was the first thing that came to my head. We talked about that. Uh, okay, uh, is there any public comment? Are anybody online?
Nobody online, but apparently there is a there is a public comment for things that are on the agenda. Something is on the agenda. Mr. Corinto said.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi. Thank you guys, Melvin Baba. I'm gonna talk about, um, the recess and physical activity policy, the procedure part of it, actually. So in the procedure, states recess must be supervised and student directed. Supervised is not defined. It may make a safer environment for all if it was defined with a age appropriate staff to student ratio. Please keep in mind that once one student has a problem, either real perceived tattling, didn't want to tell you a story, show you something, needs to be redirected, needs a reminder of what the rules are, or anything else that takes one student at that time, or one staff member away, away from the supervising role. Because their eyes have to be on the students so they feel listened to and valued. I bring this up after being at RPS recess. The whole grade level, once recess, hundred plus first graders. Those are regular staff members and a substitute staff member. The substitute staff member got called away by students saying whatever it was. But then there's another student that felt started bleeding. So at that time, the substitute was with the one student and the other hundred students were on with just one staff member watching. So I remember that you guys were talking about a recess policy. I looked it up. Didn't say anything about that. So most of the time RPS is three people, three, three staff members. But I fear that students that ratio will go down regularly as the staff goes down regularly. Do I have a magic number? No. But I do have enough experience to know that if there are staff cuts, there'll be recess monitors cuts. Unless you guys define it in your policy. Supervised could be one adult and that would be in compliance with your current wording of the policy. Anyone who would like to see for their own eyes and experience recess, I'm sure you'd be welcome to any recess RPS.
Any questions?
I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm okay, well. About what we're doing. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay, okay. Anything else? Anybody?
Yeah.
No. No. Alright.
So I will let the board know that you officially approved the policies, not the procedures. So we can go ahead and approve the policy if you feel okay with it, and we can review the procedures and let you know if we make any changes to those based on the comments made tonight. If you wanted to proceed that way, or you could pull off the seat. From tonight's vote.
But I'm sorry, is at this point in time, is it three? That's what what's what else?
Um, it depends on the recess. Um, it really, we look at the kids that are there. Danny could explain it better than I, but um, we plan the recess based on the need that's out on the playground.
But we can't have a discussion about this, right? This very.
Right, we should not.
Okay, okay. Let me take a note real quick. Anybody else?
We're done? Yeah, okay, uh, public comment. And we need to go to consent agenda, right? Okay. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Gonna make a comment with my motion?
Uh, you could make a motion and then you could have discussion.
Sure, okay.
Or you could make a motion to amend it right in your motion.
I move to approve consent agenda. We've come up.
Can you get a second? I'll say it.
Uh, so discussion.
Yep, any discussion?
I think I, uh, there's good point on the, the recess and physical activity. The policy saying recess must be supervised, student directed. It's, it's good. Uh, I think as Jennifer mentioned, I think, uh, asking, uh, what the procedures to ensure we have appropriate supervision forward, but policy doesn't need to be as directed as a procedure.
I think I, I agree. We did, we question. We look at that. Okay. Anybody else?
No. Okay. So we'll hold up.
I believe what I hear is that you're saying you would like us to review the procedure, but to go ahead and vote on the policy as it stands.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's right. So now, yeah. Are we all in? We all, we all, oh, okay. Okay. All in favor of approving the policy? Approving the consent agenda, excuse me.
I'm freaking you up tonight.
I know you are. You're throwing too many curveballs at me, you know, and I'm not a baseball player. Aye, aye, aye. Uh, any opposed? No opposed? Uh, motion's passed.
Alright, so next we have student representatives. And tonight we have Grace Hilliels and we have for the first time, uh, Kayla. Kayla Black, thank you. I wanted to say Caitlin. It's not Caitlin. Kayla Black. So Kayla is, uh, the new, one of the new officers for next year. She, she's Grace invited her to, um, be here tonight and join her, so.
Um, first topic, we have new ASP offices clearly for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Our president is Tristan Nelson. Our vice president is Jalen Totten. Senior treasurer is Cole Smith. Our junior treasurer is Lizeth Vinigas. Our secretary is Zach Hubbard and our PR is Kayla Black. Um, our spirit week is coming up next week. We have a field day coming up here soon as well. We had, um, theater put on the Out of Towners last Friday and Saturday. Robotics did a trash pickup on May eighteenth, and they also did a car wash on May eleventh. FFA went to stay. We also had decade day last week. And for track state, um, Gunner Morgan is going to the sixteen hundred and thirty-two hundred meter. Antades is going to two hundred and four hundred meter. Fast pitches is also going to stay in Ellensburg, and soon we are going to be sending off our Skills USA Robotics and Drones teams, which is going to be Zach and Kayden for drones and Mason and Danielle for robotics.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. What's that? How many days left for seniors?
Five.
But you are, you are gonna graduate? Are you sure? No, but.
I'm, I haven't done these four years for nothing.
Okay. Okay, so how did she? What is her position again now?
Public relations.
Public relations. How do you get that position? Is it voted on?
Yes, it's voted on.
It's voted on. Do you feel that that was a accurate? An honest vote? Or was it heavy-handed somewhere? Could have been heavy-handed? Could have been foul play in it?
I think, no, I, I think it was, it was she's a good, she's my partner for robotics, so I may be biased.
Okay. But there couldn't have been any anything coming from the headset up here, anything like that, somebody saying that. Okay, I'm just checking. Okay, okay. Alright. Okay, anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Alright, no.
Well, congratulations.
Can't wait to work.
Congratulations, Grace, and we thank you for being here all this year. You've done a great job keeping us informed. Um, and we wish you the best of luck as you move on.
Yeah, I'll need it.
What are you doing?
Yeah, no, 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 she asked you a question. I was getting ready to ask you, what are you doing? Where are you going? What what's your plan? Do you have a plan?
Um, I'm thinking about going to Centalia College afterwards just to get my generals. That way it's cheap and I can stay home for a little bit, and then I'll probably go, um, to Pacific Lutheran or UW for, um, to study my major because I'm gonna be doing law.
You got money to do that?
Uh, yes. I'll need more money to, so.
Good answer. Well, you know how you get more money, sign up for military.
I, I could. I could. They've been messaging me nonstop, so.
Not bad gig.
So I've heard.
Yeah. Guaranteed paycheck every month.
Yeah, and free college.
And free college. Yep. Okay. Anybody, any further questions? Badger or no? Okay. Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Pressure you go up first?
This is me. Kevin needed to go first.
Tonight, each of the principals are here. They're going to give you, um, their end of year report on their SIPs. Uh, they'll tell you, they'll remind you what their goals were, and then they're gonna tell you where they were in meeting those goals and what's the next steps might be to forward in the next year.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, hello, I'm Danny. I'm a principal at Rochester Primary School. Go. Okay. Uh, goal number one in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, sixty percent of all students in first and second grade would meet their stretch goal in ELA as measured by our I-Ready Benchmark Assessment. That was the goal we set earlier, you know, this fall, and the results are on the next. Um, so we have grade one and grade two on the left-hand side here, and I did kind of a more of a historical approach to how we've done with meeting our stretch goal because we did not get to the sixty percent, but we're getting closer. Uh, this year, first grade had forty percent kids, uh, meet their stretch growth and second grade had thirty-four percent of our kids meet their stretch growth. And the stretch goal is actually exceeding a year's typical growth. It's maximizing your amount of learning over time. So we shot for the stars or shot for the moon to land among the stars, right? Is that the quote? Um, so the stretch goal is a significant amount of growth for each student, but you can see over the course of time, our kids are making more progress on meeting that goal. Um, we raised that percentage considerably from twenty twenty-one to twenty-three twenty. So we're gonna continue to work on ELA. Uh, the visual there is just showing you how I-Ready uh, measures typical and stretch growth for students. Next steps, we're gonna continue with letters training with Joey, um, on our second half of the reading rope. More about comprehension and vocabulary instruction this coming year. Our teachers will be working through PLC and the unit planning process as we work through our new curriculum adoption, adoption of UFLY using the structured literacy approach to teaching ELA. Um, making sure we're using our common formative assessments to make data-driven decisions within our MTSS. So we've been doing a lot of work, um, recently with our multi-tiered systems of support and talking about how the interventions we have for students in ELA that need a tier two and a tier three intervention don't compete during the school day. So we're doing some work with how we'll meet student need during the school day. Goal two was about multilingual services at RPS. And again, focused on first and second grade students. And we look specifically at the area of speaking within the WIDA assessment. We got those results back Monday. So I said, Ms. Robinson, can you help me with this? And she dug into the data because the WIDA data isn't as easy to dig into, but she knows it very, very well. So on the next slide, um, how many students met the goal of moving up one point in proficiency? And, uh, our first graders that were identified as needing help, sixty-two percent of them made that, and our second grade students, fifty-four percent of those students. Uh, this is our newcomer group who Ms. Candace Robinson is most excited to support this year, and two of these students actually made this growth, which is amazing, coming with very limited English skills, but, um, these kids are, are pretty awesome. Uh, their names are there at the bottom. That's okay. Uh, wonderful kids. Uh, next steps, we're gonna continue to learn from Candace on language supports that can, that can be provided by all of our teachers in the classroom and not just the multilingual teacher. Um, PLCs and unit plans, and again, we're working with our teams to embed the language standards within their unit plans for each area. And then within our multi-tiered systems of support, which there is a graphic there, uh, I've seen it a lot the last few weeks of how we can make sure that ML supports aren't competing with other supports kids need, um, within the school day. And then our expansion of dual language. So we finished our first year, uh, which you'll see in the last slide, uh, uh, kindergartners having a dual language experience. Goal three. So this one was a little harder for me to measure. Um, we will see at least thirty percent increase in the number of our teachers able to proficiently respond to the tier two behavior needs of our students. So we've had an increase in the number of behaviors at our school the last few years. And to address that need, you've been doing a lot of learning. You can go to the next slide around the best ways to help kids co-regulate or, uh, regulate themselves when they become dysregulated. Uh, did we meet the goal? Well, the responses that were given in February, and this is where we fell short, didn't give the we didn't have a baseline to measure the thirty percent from. Uh, I have the February responses from teachers and we didn't get a lot of them, but, um, they six teachers said their confidence stayed about the same in responding to those behaviors. Four teachers said they're significantly more confident in responding to them. And twelve teachers said they are somewhat more confident in responding to tier two behaviors. So we're gonna continue to work and think about how we can help build that teacher confidence level. Uh, this year, what we have done, uh, our tier one cell instruction is building wide. Uh, Sarah Gerberkai, our counselor, has built a scope and sequence for this, and our teachers are teaching our second step. Uh, we're having morning meetings. We have regulation stations in classrooms, and even our kindergarten students, I've interacted with a few today, can tell me, Mrs. Currents, I'm here. And that means their brain is in the yellow zone. They haven't flipped their lid yet. And then I can ask, what strategy do you need? And for some kids, it's a visual point and tell me what you need to help get your brain back where it needs to be. Or others, um, they can verbalize and tell me what they'd like to do. Um, but that is happening across our building. So we are making gains. Um, we're continuing to build our capacity to respond to behavior. The next one is next steps for us. Uh, we are working through module D of our foundations program. Um, with the, which is through safe and civil schools to help build a more um, consistent and strategic system for supporting behavior. We are also working through our MTSS system with that as well. Our foundations team has identified core behaviors and we're working on building some proficiency scales. Um, we did get a grant for reducing isolation, isolation and restraint, raising those funds for more Ucaro training for our staff. Um, and coaching cycles with our BCBA. So those are some of the things we're doing to keep meeting the demand that we have right now for a high level of need for our kids that, that need help with behavior.
The CBA is?
A board certified behavior analyst. Yes, she, um, helps with coaching cycles with teachers who are working on improving with management in the classroom. And then celebration. I only did one big one. Um, I knew I was a lot. I know I'm past five minutes. Um, uh, this is our multi, our dual language kindergarten classrooms, both together having a fiesta after the cows came. Um, and they had families volunteer, they had tamales, they had pico. Um, they all celebrated together and it was pretty magical, and it's been pretty fun seeing, uh, first year dual language program in kindergarten. A lot of the kids picking up on a lot of Spanish words. It's pretty amazing. So it was a very fun day. Dr. Bethman was there. And some other staff came to visit too. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Lee.
Where did we, or where are we with, uh, interest for next year? Cause I know it was.
Oh, yes, high level of interest. We have filled both, both classrooms and we have sent letters to the initial people who, um, were picked through the lottery to see if they will consent to be a part of this. And you've gotten all but three commitment letters back, so we'll be fully fully enrolled. We have a waiting list.
We had to do the lottery.
Yeah, oh, yes, we did the lottery. We had to, we had so many. And then these kids will be first graders next year, so we'll have two grade levels with a dual language component. Yep.
What's your numbers on it from this year to next year? How much?
Building what?
No, for in the, in the program.
Forty, forty. Yeah, we have.
Forty this year.
It'll roll up to first grade, and then we'll have forty kindergarteners coming in that will be dual language. So quarter of our population eventually will be dual language.
Okay.
Yeah.
My only other question was with a couple of slides back, we about talking about the teachers not being able to.
Confidently responded to your two behaviors. Yes.
What, um, briefly, why? I can't.
I think that some of the behaviors that we're seeing in kids can cause adults themselves to have a response that isn't always responding, but reacting. You can be reactionary, and I think to build your confidence, you need to have lots of tools in your toolbox for how to help kids reach regulation. Outside of progressive discipline, which doesn't seem to be as research-based as other methods for helping kids. So, you know, timeout to ten minutes of recess, that's not proven to help kids. But help kid, what helps kids is teach them how to manage their emotions, which takes a, a lot of time and effort and energy, all those things. Um, we're working on improving their toolbox per se.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Sales was trying to take my place, but I told him, no, it's gotta be me. I am Kelly Brem Gardner, as you know, from Grand Mall, my former assistant principal over there, Kayla Black. Um, true story. Uh, isn't it, Kayla? Yep. Um, so our first goal, uh, for this year, first SIP was, was a lofty one. You might remember me saying that back in the fall, but we go lofty and, like we say, shoot, shoot for the moon and land amongst the stars, whatever. So eighty-five percent, we were really focusing on our multilingual students because those are the ones that were showing the greatest, one of the groups that was showing the greatest need. So we were shooting for eighty-five percent of them to show stretch growth or higher on their I-Ready ELA scores. So, um, in looking at that, first, we had eighty-three percent of our students are making progress. And I wanna clarify this because our goal was eighty-five to meet their stretch goal. And we did this assessment early May, first week in May. So if you look at the second half of that marker for each of those grade levels, thirteen percent of our fifth graders have already reached that at the first of May. Eighty-three of ours are continuing to make progress within their stretch goal. So they've already met their typical goals. That's stretch, stretch goal that Danny described that's working beyond a typical year's growth. Eighty-three percent of our fifth graders are working and making progress in that stretch goal, which is good news, but we, as a, the, the first week in May, we only had thirteen percent of our fifth graders meeting that. In our fourth grade, ninety-five percent of our kids are making good progress towards their stretch goal and twenty-four have reached their stretch goal. And hundred percent of our kids are still making progress in third grade in that stretch goal range, and with twenty-two percent of them having already reached it the first of May. So one would say we have six weeks left of school, but really, I mean, we're teaching and all the time we can teach, but we're also testing, so we don't really get all of those days for teaching. But we're doing the best with what we got. So um, next step, some things that we saw, the worst exception.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, we sit within the stretch goal. They've, they've met a full year's growth and then the other that, that beyond a year's growth.
Yes, and so actually, all of those kids have met, had met their hundred percent of their typical growth goal, which is one year's growth, which is awesome.
Yes.
But when we have kids that are behind, we're wanting to go beyond a year because if we just do a year all the time, they're always gonna be a little bit behind. So the idea is we wanna catch them up. So that's, that's why we target that stretch goal to get them beyond. If we can do that every year, we're gonna get them where we want them.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I, I missed that. So, um, one of the things we wanna continue doing is our multilingual teacher was building a Google Classroom. And we wanna really beef that up and make sure that's accessible to teachers because he, he can dump all of his resources for them right in there and they can easily access it. So we wanna do a stronger job of that next year. Our multilingual teacher, I'm visiting PLCs on Fridays and collaborating with teachers. So if they have questions about how to serve that specific group of kids, he can help support that a little bit better. Continue doing the, the work we've done around engagement strategies. Um, continue that universal design for learning that we've been working on. So letting kids show what they've learned towards the standards in a variety of ways. Um, and then, you know, we have this thing I shared in the past about warrior wow words and kids were super excited about it. Staff is excited about it. We introduce it every week, but kind of the entries that we had in the contest weekly are super cool, but they're not to the numbers we would like to see for the number of kids we have in our building. So, um, one thing we wanna do is increase that engagement and we are adding, we have a fifth grade leadership team, and next year we're adding a fourth and third grade leadership team. So one of our ideas is to go to them and find out what ideas do they have to help kids get more engaged and network and get some student voice in there. So, um, another goal we had was really the same goal focused on, um, our students with IEPs because that was another group that we noticed wasn't quite where we wanted to see them in the growth. So our goal was eighty-five percent. And again, looking at this from the same mindset, in our fifth grade, twenty-seven percent of those students have reached their stretch goal. And sixty-seven percent of them of the students are still making good progress within their stretch goal, again, as of the first of May, first week in May. of the students are still making good progress within their stretch goal. Again, as of the first of May, first week in May. We have thirty-one percent making that already reached their stretch goal the first of May. All of the rest of our fourth graders are still making progress towards that stretch goal. Which means they have passed that typical growth and they're working beyond. And then in the third grade, we have thirteen percent that have reached their stretch goal. But all students are making progress within that stretch goal. So that was not the goal we wanted to hit, but I think because we focus so much on it is why we're seeing the growth that we're seeing. So excited about that.
Any indicators as to, um, this with the fifth grade class? Is it just about numbers or is it the particular challenges?
Um, I think there's a lot of challenges. Um, you know, we always go back to the issues around COVID, but it is a very large group that we're sending on. Uh, we have eight fifth grade teachers and we've never had that in the history of my days, eight years at Grandman. So it is a very large group. They do have a diverse group of needs for sure, but um, just trying to zone in and really figure out the unit planning work that Danny mentioned. Um, we're really focusing in on exactly what do kids know and not know and that M T S S group that's meeting weekly and, and twenty of us from the district are going into a conference this summer. We're really going to be focusing in on how do we use our data to target, where's the gap, what essential skill are they missing? And how can we regroup kids to catch up that skill while keeping them working on their grade level standards? So we've got some, some good work going on trying to help fill those gaps.
Thank you.
So next steps, um, much like the M L, um, teacher, we want to make sure our case managers continue to collaborate with classroom teachers and they are attending the P L C in the Janet classroom for half of their P L C time on Friday. And so that they can share some different inclusionary practices and strategies and tools um, for making accommodations and getting better access for those kiddos, um, who have I N Ps. And then continuing our letters training next year and tying that letters training and our science of reading train to our new adoption of the foundational skills of not our ninety-five percent group. And our last goal was, and this is a good tricky in the language, but I'll explain it. Um, ninety percent of our students to attend regularly. And attending regularly means ninety percent of those kids would have less than ten percent absence during the school year. So there, I'm going to share two pieces of data. One thing that we do, and I'll talk more on the next slide, but is every day we report, um, what percentage of kids are at school? And every day this year we've had, uh, except for like ten days, we've had ninety percent of daily attendance at our school. So ninety percent of our kids are there every day. Um, some of those shortfalls were the day before break when we have a half day and those kind of things. So um, that's a good success, but our goal was around students, students who attend regularly. So we did have seventy-three percent of our students attended regularly, meaning seventy-three, three percent of them, excuse me, have less than ten percent absences throughout the year. So even though we had ninety percent daily, those kids keep changing. So when you look at individual kids, seventy percent of our kids had less than that ten percent absence, um, which is certainly an increase from last year. Um, but I don't want to mislead you that because we had ninety percent daily, which is excellent. I mean, we celebrate that big time. Um, we, I don't want to confuse that. So, does that make sense?
Kind of.
Okay.
The goal was set ninety percent and you landed at seventy-three, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the seventy percent, seventy-three percent of those students attended regularly, our goal was for ninety percent of them to attend regularly. What gets tricky is our goal, our daily goal is to have ninety percent of our kids at school. And we, we did, I mean, in our building to help increase that other goal. Does that make sense? I hope, but I probably have you fully confused now, but um, it helped us, it made sense to kids to be able to report daily and that's motivated them to improve. And so that was part of this continue all warriors here campaign, all warriors here and all warriors on time. That's our daily announcement celebration. And then as they, as classrooms meet certain marks, they get popcorn parties, we make announcements at assemblies. So we're just always celebrating and then being very intentional. You should have, oh, Justin, it's so good to see you here today. I'm so glad you made it. He's ten minutes late, but I'm only going to focus on the fact that he's ten minutes late. I'm glad you're here. And those little things make a huge difference. So that's part of that campaign as well. And then of course, doing things that make people want to come to school. So fun things like our E L A night, our steam night, we're doing a reading bingo currently. Well, next, starting next week with, um, our booster club, we had a V I P breakfast where they got to bring their very important person in their family, could be mom, dad, grandpa, grandma, neighbor, whoever. Um, some brought their older siblings. And then, um, this summer, um, Kelsey Lincoln is attending a hope conference in Spokane at the end of June and that's going to have a lot of focus around this, building hope in kids who've had some trauma. And just the, I guess, two big celebrations that stand out, although there's a lot was our, you know, our family nights were the first family nights we've done since COVID. And we had huge attendance, um, three hundred and fifty at E L A night and two hundred and fifty at steam night. So that was a big deal. And then having you know, only ten days of our school year being under ninety percent of kids at school in a given day. We were pretty excited about that. So. Any other questions?
A couple more. I, well, you probably don't know the number, but you have an estimate, like if kids are missing, which looks like improvement, but are most of them at least reporting they're out because they're sick? Or do you have, don't, how many are volunteering that like just staying home for other reasons?
Yes. So in those statistics, um, excused or unexcused, it's still an absence.
Yeah.
But yes, the majority of them are excused. They do call in, they do give a note, a notice. Um, Lloyd Cordell is our attendance officer and she's over the top. She actually gives a lot of ideas to other buildings and, and administrators frankly. Um, so she, we have a robocall that goes out at about ten o'clock in the morning to families and then they can respond to that. She's got to know certain families, so she will remind message them, hey, we noticed Johnny's out today. And connects with them that way if they missed the robocall. Um, then she follows up at conferences with a form that says your kid was out on this day. Can you help us understand why? So she really tries to figure out why were they gone? And then of course, you know, we have letters that go home when they get to a certain number of absences. And then Mrs. Lincoln manages most of that. Um, that's one of her roles. And so she has meetings, um, either via phone or in person with those families to try to figure out what are the barriers, what's keeping them from getting here? Um, and sometimes, I mean, there's very legitimate reasons, of course, why you have to excuse some absences. And then sometimes it's things like the kiddo gets himself off to school because it's a single mom and needs an alarm clock and we literally would just get him an alarm clock and that fixes it. And sometimes it's bigger barriers than that, but we just figure, try to figure out what the barrier is and work to break it down. So. Any other questions?
Alan, I love that I have been around long enough that I remember when your mom announced to our staff that you would be born in Absolutely love it. I'm not even worried about being that old. I love it. I absolutely love it. Saw Jillian earlier at the high cap meeting. It was great. Ninety percent of our E L L students would show typical or better growth on their reading i-ready scores, uh, for the benchmark. And we didn't make that. We have some interesting data and we have a lot that we need to dig into. Our sixth graders hit it at seventy-four percent. Our seventh graders at fifty-two percent, our eighth graders at twenty-nine percent. Now, this is relatively new data to us. So if you're going to ask me exactly why, I'm going to tell you that I don't know the answer. But I'm going to talk about the potential answer coming up in a few minutes. Interesting data though. So in our school in reading, the median for our whole school is a hundred and seventeen percent of their typical growth. That means half of our kids are above a hundred and seventeen percent and half below. You look at that sixth grade, E L L students, okay, students with an M L L E L designation, seventy-four percent made typical or better. The whole sixth grade student body was fifty-nine percent. That number is fifteen percent higher than the whole grade level average. The seventh grade number is right about there. Sixth grade or the eighth grade number is significantly lower and we're going to be digging into that. But we have thirty-nine percent of our M L L E L students at a year and a half or better growth. And that's awesome stuff. Next one, please. Seventy-five percent of our students, two or more grade levels behind will show typical or better growth on their math i-ready scores. All right. Fifty-three percent of our students made that goal. Another six percent were close. We did this assessment back middle to late April. Um, forty percent roughly of our five hundred students fit that criteria. So this is not a small subset of kids. This is a large group of kids. Seventy-three out of that two hundred and nine reached that, that one point five years of growth. And here's another one that was interesting. So our school right now, for typical growth, our school right now is working at about forty-nine percent in math at typical growth. This group of kids, fifty-three. So we feel like there's some work that we definitely need to be doing. But some of the emphasis that we're putting on some of these groups of students that have been historically marginalized, that there's been some challenges. Some of those we feel like have been paying off, but I'll get to that on the next slide. Our next step is we need to take a deep dive into this data. We need to take a look at what services are all of these students getting? So, you know, is it, is it that the students that were receiving some extra help services did really well? And the students that weren't, didn't? What kind of services were all of our students getting? And can we track that back to their success rate? Because if so, we need to be making, taking a look at how do we expand those opportunities? We have time set aside next week, both Thursday and Friday after school. By the way, appreciate the fact that you continue to fund tri-contracts because we're going to be spending some after school time with that. Appreciate the fact that we have act Friday time. About, about once a month or so, that's a, a building act Friday next week happens to be that. So we're going to get Thursday time, Friday time to dig into some of this data and go, hey, this is how our kids did. Let's take a look and let's figure something out. So. Um, back just real quick. Sorry, I skipped over it. We're going to be looking into why the disparity in reading. I mean, look at our sixth grade numbers with our M L L students versus our eighth grade numbers. Are they just really getting sick by the time they get to eighth grade of i-ready? They're just getting i-rated out? Or is there something that we're doing with sixth grade that we're not having a good enough conversation about what that is? And we need to get that transitioned over to the eighth grade as well. We need to make sure that we're doing that. So we're going to be having those kinds of conversations as well. We need our kids to be successful. All right. Goal three, seventy percent of our students at risk in self-awareness on the DESA would increase their skills, um, as measured by DESA and write-ups. I don't have the write-ups data yet. We won't have that until the end of the year. But forty-two persons, forty-two students screened in as at risk in self-awareness in the fall. Nineteen of them are forty-five percent showed an increase in skills. There were a bunch of them that showed a leveling of skills and we had a few kids that even regressed in their skills. And this is something again that we've been working at, but, um, it's something that we need to spend some more time working at. Okay. We feel like at Rochester Middle School that we do a pretty good job overall. There's some things that we don't do, uh, some data that's coming back that we feel like we need to improve on. But, um, we feel like we do a pretty good job. You see our, our band there, uh, performing at a, at an event at another high school. So next slide. Sometimes though, you need to go talk to a lot of other people. Sometimes you need to, to get out to that bigger group. So we're going to be reaching out to some other experts. We're going to be reaching out to some folks at, you know, O S P I or at the, the E S D. We're going to be using our coaches. We're going to be talking to folks at other buildings that have been successful and say, hey, what kinds of things are you guys doing? We've actually already started some of those conversations. You know, what kinds of things are you guys doing to be successful? You know, sometimes it's, it's, sometimes it works out a whole lot better when you have a much larger section. So that is some of the work that we're going to be doing. You heard a few times talk about M T S S. Think, do I have one more slide? I think I do. Yes. So we had a lot of students make huge gains in, in some of these areas and we're really proud of that. But we know that we need to make changes, so we're going to be making some changes to the multi-tiered system of supports, M T S S that we offer for next year. We're going to be trying to find ways to help kids in more than one area for periods of time. We're going to be trying to find ways to more quickly intervene when we see students struggling. Instead of waiting nine weeks till the end of the quarter. By the time we get to the end of the first quarter of next year, we're going to be in a situation where we're rotating kids a lot faster. And we're trying to meet their needs based on the standards that the state has set out that we need to help them in. So, and we're going to get after it. Questions?
So question about, oh, here's a couple of slides back about the reading.
Yeah.
Okay. I can understand if students are having problems with the arithmetic. Got it. Okay. You know, numbers, whatever.
Sure.
But what is it in the reading is why they're not up to, they, they just can't read? Or is it what other things are, is lumped all into reading?
So historically, our kids have had some struggles as they get into more and more challenging words. So it's not just, you know, can they read and can they read it approximately a hundred and fifty words per minute? So that they can, you know, comprehend at that level, but it's as the years, as you move up from like sixth grade to seventh grade, can eighth, to eighth grade. Can they read harder text materials? Do they struggle in the areas of like science? You know, when they're reading a science text and you've got a whole bunch of ologies and illogies, you know, those kinds of things. It's when we start getting into deeper into vocabulary, those are the things that tend to, to catch students up. And that was one of our big pushes this year was vocabulary and we're going to continue that. So.
On the math side.
Yeah.
We have about forty percent of our students are two or more grade levels behind.
Yes. However, what I will also tell you is we reduced that number from fall to, um, spring. We reduced that number by, I want to say twelve percentage points. I might, I might even have brought that. I didn't bring that, I don't think, but I can grab it. I can get it for you. Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate the focus.
Oh, actually I did bring it. Sorry. We were at forty-four percent. We dropped that down to thirty-five percent by the spring. So it's not great, but a quarter of that number was reduced. So, thank you. Yeah. I thought I had made that note. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Good evening. Last stop, I need to go last, right? I'm always sneaking up. Uh, first goal, all students will demonstrate an increase in proficiency in E L A by ten percent based on grade level student assessments. Uh, next slide, uh, the tenth grade is currently doing their S B A testing right now. So we don't have access to that. Basically all of our data is on hold. We don't have it yet because it's coming. We're, we waited till the end of the testing window, trying to get as much instruction in before we take the test. Unlike these guys, they all jumped in and they still had great numbers because they were early. Um, and so I just did a couple of updates there. Um, teachers will receive training. What did we, these were our areas of aim when we started in, uh, fall. Uh, we did this via our trial, our staff meetings and the building P L Cs. Teachers will assist students in developing and using digital organizers and enhance literacy skills. This has been completed. Uh, we use a staff survey to show that teachers have increased the use um, literacy tools in their classroom. We, I shared that with you at the last meeting in February, talking about how much it's increased over time. And obviously we're seeing this in the classrooms. I can tell you, I'm going into classrooms when I'm doing observations. And I've seen teachers doing pre-reading activities in science. You know, these are the new words you're going to encounter. What does this one mean? What does this mean? They're breaking everything down before they ever read the section. So then the kids are already primed for success when they're reading it. Um, so that's been really impactful in what they're trying to do. Um, and then we've been using all kinds of, um, obviously with literacy is one of our focuses as a district. Um, using word walls and vocabulary and you know, Will mentioned it and I'm sure, um, Danny and Kelly would even emphasize it. We're, we're really hammering vocabulary because if you don't understand a word, when you encounter it, you don't know how to, if you don't have the tools to break it down and try and figure out what it means, you know, using context tools around it, um, breaking the word down and where is it coming from, um, just developing all those skills so that they have an opportunity to access the information. Um, so we're, we're hopeful, um, but we're waiting to see, um, what comes. So next steps, um, we've already begun work on our twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, SIP plan. Um, we're going to move forward. We're going to continue to work in the literacy area, um, to To keep that emphasis because we've really made gains this year. We want to continue to do that. Um, once we have our data, uh, we'll probably look at that. Well, we'll look at that as administrators in June because we'll have it before we leave. So we can kind of get a first glimpse and. Kind of start getting gathering ideas on what we need to do and then we'll work with uh the staff when they return in August, um, sharing the data. And then also, um, when we do our uh preschool conferences with families. We'll make sure the parents can see that data and know where their child is to begin of this year. So they get to have a picture of where their their students progress over time. We'll look at what they did in middle school and then as they come into high school. Um, so they could comparatively look at those numbers. And we're gonna, we're already planning out next year's professional development based on all of these ideas. And how do we uh become even more impactful with our instructional tools uh to increase student learning opportunities? And then the last one, I said it kind of already, but we're gonna work really hard to communicate through results to students. One, make sure students understand where it is they are and what they need to do to grow. And then make sure families understand where their child is. So it's not like, what do you mean he's reading at a fourth grade level? He's in tenth grade. This is the first time I've heard this. Um, I know as as a district, we're really communicating this. And so to make sure parents, because they have a vested role in their students learning just like we do. And so they can work with us to help. And so maybe circle back and make sure, you know, ask many questions. Are there any things we can do to provide assistance to you? Um, so that's really important. Uh, goal two, all identifiable bilingual students will demonstrate at least one standard deviation growth on the composite section, which. Kind of goes back, then it was Kelly. She said one. Was it you hit at the one, Kelly, or was it Danny?
It was me.
It was Danny. Um. Moving one whole level on the composite score is like a very, very perky lift. This is really big deal. And so uh we had forty-two students that were identified um in a set subcategory. And so of the forty-two, eight hit it or went above it. Um, which is pretty impressive. It was a very large goal. And the average growth, and and this is above average point five eight three. So of all those kids, their average increase was point five eight three. The the biggest challenge with Weta. Is that data hasn't really shown up in the system. They can, they can go in and grab the raw data and that's what I had Mrs. Care to. Pull all this for me and say, just, so we kind of sat down and cranked through it. So I could, you know, I knew we had the data. Uh, so we did meet our goal. And we're gonna continue to focus um on supporting our students. Uh, our SIP goal next year, we're looking at um working with. The staff was having a conversation when we were looking at all the different opportunities and. Our students that are on free and reduced lunch that are facing economic challenges or like at at the high school right now are identified as fifty-four percent of our students. And so they want to focus on that group because it's a much wider swath of students um to try and focus on. So that's gonna be where we head next year, um, trying to broaden our reach and impact larger number of students inside of our school. Um, that are facing challenges academically. Uh, um, we're gonna continue using elevation. Um, this is a phenomenal tool. Um, it's the E L L program. It has all the data for what where the students are performing at, but even more importantly, it breaks it all down. And then it has the structural strategies you can use. And so there's a wealth of tools in there and we did some training on it this year, but we didn't. There's so many things we want to do and there's just not a time, enough time to do everything, but we're gonna continue to go deeper inside of this program and. Give our teacher, this is the tool bag. And the the awesome thing about. E L L or U D L or anything we're doing, when you work on a broad-based. Tool for inclusionary practices, it helps all students, not just, you know, your E L L or your sped kids. When you include those inclusionary practices, now all the students are getting access. So there's some kids that aren't identified and that assists them even though they're not been identified as someone who needs help. We're gonna continue, I've talked about the literature, um, P D continuing. Um, we're gonna continue teaching school-like folks academic vocabulary, providing students opportunities. Um, data again, once we get our data in from I ready and S B A. Uh, we can use that to drive instructional decisions and professional development decisions for next year. And then again, lastly, communicating this information with parents and students um to make sure that they know where their students are and. Um, so they can be informed what we can do to work together to help improve if they're not where we want them to be yet. Attendance, um, seventy-five percent of R H S students will have nine absences or less, which is the ninety percent goal. As of yesterday, uh, we had six hundred and twenty-one students actively enrolled and of those students, three hundred and thirty-eight. Are at the ninety percent attendance for the school year. Um, it's fifty-four point four percent attendance rate at ninety or more. Um, so we didn't reach our goal. However, I went back and looked, I pulled raw data. I didn't, I, if you asked me if it was excused or unexcused, I did. I could go back and look at that again and tell you what it is. Um, but I just looked at straight absences because I was trying to number crunch. And last year, that number uh was forty-six point eight, so we increased about almost nine percent. Um, from last year to this year. And so uh, we're not gonna focus on attendance in our SIP plan next year, but we're gonna continue to drive this number. So my expectation is next year to push this number up into the mid-sixties to seventy percent. Um, we're gonna keep doing that so you can go to the next step. Continue doing everything we've done this year. Notifications with the kids, keep them involved. Um. We are going to identify the students who have had challenges getting to school this year and next year before school starts. Uh, they'll meet with me or my assistant principal or Ms. Johnson or and their counselors. Um, say, hey, we had challenges last year. What can we do this year to be better and how do we support you? And then we're gonna keep an eye on those kids. We know that they have a challenge. So we're gonna be on, we're gonna watch them with the laser-like focus to try and if they start to slip. Be on before it starts to become unmanageable. And so really focus there. Um, we're gonna try and increase um competitions. We did the the March Madness thing, which I addressed at the last meeting. Um, I wanna do a weekly competition. Um, the idea is like, you know soccer, the Premier League. And so basically, we have the whole school competing against each other to be the best in the league. And so every week you compete against a different class for your advisory attendance and we'll keep track of it. And then I'm trying to figure out the rest of it, but that's the basic idea is have the kids competing on attendance because that was, you guys could. Tell when you guys were competing in the C S R when we were doing March Madness, you guys were talking about attendance, right?
Oh, Nicholas won.
See the pride? Look at that. Uh, and so that's what I was trying to do is um tap into that competitive nature that kids have. And um, and so we're trying to figure out what that looks like, but we're going um to continue to emphasize attendance. Because we all know if you're at school, you can learn. If you're not at school, you're not gonna learn. And so we'd have to make that number go higher. And we're just gonna keep at it until we get as many kids as we possibly can. Um, and then next year, our P V I S program will be going back in. Uh, Ms. Bowen is gonna work with us, which is positive behavior interventions and supports. So we're basically emphasizing. Kind of telling kids that are doing good things, you're doing awesome things. And reinforcing the behaviors we want to see. And so those kids that sometimes aren't getting attention will see, well, how did that kid get that? Well, they show up every day. Well, guess what? If I showed up every day, I'll get that too. Um, and so that's the idea of our P V I S program. Um, we're gonna get that reenacted and. I'm starting developing it and it'll evolve over the next few years as we get a better feel for what our kids need and what we can do to better um structure things for them. Celebrations, um. On the literacy side, our instructional staff has embraced our literacy initiative and they're transforming their instructional practices. I wasn't here last year. But I can't say what compared to last year, but I can tell you from what I saw in the fall to what I see this spring is. Much stronger and focused on these initiatives and you can see the difference in the classrooms. Um, our multilingual students are working super hard. Um, it's impressive to see this effort that they've made that eight kids. Out of forty-two were able to actually move a whole level. That's like, so at that age is monstrously big. And then an eight percent increase in attendance. Um, we're proud of that. Uh. I mean, if it went backwards, that would be a cause for concern, but we got better. So next year, we want to be better than we were this year and always striving to be better than we were. We can always be better, whatever it is we're trying to get aim at.
So you mentioned something about the free and reduced lunch. So I'm try, I was trying to make sure I understood, so. Say there's fifty kids that, let's just use that number, whatever. Fifty kids are on free and reduced lunch. Is there a correlation with kids that uh that are on free and reduced lunch that don't make better grades? Or do you track it like?
Data is showing they're not achieving at the levels we want. And so that's why we're choosing. And that's been the question is, is how do we, we, we're trying to figure out how to identify these students without.
Identifying.
Identify, you know, so. But the idea is to get, get into the root of that. Um, so obviously, if you're coming from limited economic proficiency. You know, your, your family's probably working really hard. There's not enough money to go around, so maybe your parents aren't as present as they can be. And and there's a million factors that go into feed into um poverty. And so trying to help those. Each student has a different set of challenges they bring and so helping them navigate whatever that is. Um, and giving them the tools they need to be successful because we can do all the work and it doesn't do us any good. Because it's the students who have to get out in the world and do something with what we taught them. And so our job is to give them the tools so that they can be successful.
I was just thinking, I, I heard that, but I was like, is he trying to track it that way? That's what I was trying to.
And I think that number is larger than fifty-four percent. We just have a lot of kids that and their families are choosing not to fill out the paperwork, which is disappointing because. They can get free lunch and they're, and they're, you know, if you play a sport, you don't have to pay the activity fee. If you want to go to the dance, you don't have to pay for that. And so there's a lot of opportunities for students. You know, and and it's not like you walk around the sign saying, I, I'm free lunch. Just punch your number like everyone else. Nobody knows who you are. And so um, trying to get by that stigma of asking for assistance is okay. Because if we can get them bed and it, because you have food, you're properly nourished, you're gonna learn better than if you're hungry.
I was, I was trying to think of how, something real quick, but it it didn't come to my mind about how to. You know, pinpoint, you know, somebody and say, hey, come here. You know, look, let's form out.
I've pulled a number of students aside because of whatever I see in a lunchroom and I say, hey, you know, we could do this. And you wouldn't have to do that anymore. You, you could get the food you need.
Yeah.
And so I just have those conversations and um, when they come in at conferences and we do our success conference at the beginning. We talk to parents and what, and we're gonna canvass them again and we're out there and we're trying to support them and get them, um, encourage them. Um, just to fill it out, even if you're not eligible, because you don't know who is and who isn't. Um, so we just fill it out and if you qualify, we'll do it. And if you don't, that's fine, we move along.
You say you pull aside, you, you have kids that are going to lunch that don't have food or they just have.
Yes, we have, we have, I'll, I'll have a student who will go through the lunch, the lunch line and grab a cheeseburger and then try and squeeze out the backside and not pay for it. Because he doesn't have any money. Um, so we have kids who are hungry.
Yeah.
And they need to eat. And so um, if I see that kid, I, obviously, if they're doing that, that's, that's a. Indication that there's some stuff that they need some help and um, no kid should ever be hungry. Um, and so we're trying to, I'm trying to help them, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
There we go, business.
So okay, towards the end of the year, uh, with May, our F P E count was two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we had ninety-two students participating in running start and thirty-eight are running start only. Um, heart dropped a little to forty-one point seven two. Three hundred and fifty special education students and ten kids participating in the dropout re-engagement program. Um, so this is just a visual of that, the arrow points where you are um in the current school year compared to others. Um, our budget status at the end of April were sixty-six point six seven percent of the year complete. Our revenues are at sixty-six point three seven and our expenditures at sixty-seven point five two. So staying on track. Um, for all the funds, the general fund, any fund balance is two million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That includes the million dollar transfer that we did. Um, we plan on paying that off next week. Uh, capital projects at two point four million. Again, that short a million because of the transfer we did. Debt service to eight hundred and four thousand, A S B at five hundred and seventy-three thousand and transportation vehicle at a hundred and forty-one thousand. If I said the wrong thing.
So, okay.
I see a question.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if I missed it on the slide before, but the question I have in my head. What is the total amount of money that the, over an annual year and however you want to go, annual? That the state gives us? And federal government, and then what is by the, excuse me, our levy, levy money?
Can you go back one? So um, that top breaks down the local revenue, state revenues and federal revenues.
Mm-hmm.
Um, compared to date and then our budget. So that's what we project. So locals at four point eight million. The state provides twenty-eight point seven million and the federal um government provides four point eight million, which is. A si, a bigger number than it's going to be moving forward because that includes over two million investor dollars. Um, so that's going to cut significantly next year.
But basically, we really need to state step up.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get on that subject, but whatever.
All right. So first of all, I want to thank all the principals for being here and presenting tonight. So hey, um, are really. Out there working with our students to continue to close the gap where we have students that have a gap in their learning. You heard a lot about the M T S S work that's going on. Um, each of the buildings is working to put it, put together a multi-tiered system of support. So that we can address our tier-two students and our tier-three while they continue to have access to the general curriculum. Um, it's a real challenge, but they're, they're going after it, um, which have, it's, it's good work. It's, it's the work that we need to be doing. Um, so here you see, uh, Grace shared with you that we had, that the high school put on the production of Out of Towners. It was a great production. Um, they actually did some work and Kelsey Cosin uh arranged the music. So that the band actually was there and was the accompanied, accompanied the uh, the vocalists that were singing. Um, but the kids did a great job. Um, they, they had, I think, very. Full capacity in there, in the commons there both nights um for the performances and Kendra. Uh, Kendra was, she's the one there in the red hair with the bathrobe on. Um, that's her there. She was one of the leads in the play and did a great job in the musical as well as all the other kids. Next. She's a senior.
They have, was she in Alien last year?
She was in Alien last year, a year before, whichever.
Last year. So she was, she was one of the leads on that one, too, I think.
Was she?
Uh, there was also the multicultural festival just a couple of weeks ago. That was another great evening. Um, there they had uh different uh students there doing dances. Um, they had games from different cultures. So the kids that were there were able to participate in the different games. They had food. Uh, different uh, at different forms of food there that everybody could go and and taste and. Um, had more than enough food. It was a wonderful celebration of the different cultures in our, in our community. Um, we also need to take note of their, our kids that have gone to state this year or are actually there now. Our track and fast pitch teams are at stake. Or on their way to being engaged in state tomorrow. Um, I believe, didn't Gunner run today? Did anybody hear how he did? You guys here? No? Um, so as Grace mentioned, Gunner and Mercedes are at state now and they're up in Tacoma competing. And then um Izzy was at, she was, she played in the state golf tournament.
Hmm.
And had a, a good experience. She didn't place in the top, I think she was. I don't know what her final, what was it?
She was forty-third.
Forty-third, okay. Um, but really did a good job getting all the way there. That's a competitive group to be up against. And then our fast pitch team left today. They, you can see the top two pitcher, pictures are R P S and G M E S. Out on the side of the access road, um, cheering the girl, the girls on before they turned around and went back and. Um, got on the bus and were escorted out with the fire department. So, um, and then there was a. And then there was a large group of people at the roundabouts that were cheering them on there. So they are over in Seela. Um, and they will be playing tomorrow, I think at nine o'clock and then hopefully after they win, not hopefully, but after they win tomorrow at nine, they'll be playing on Saturday. Um, we also today had our coaches up at the Inclusionary Practices Project. They were giving a presentation on the work that we're doing in the district. They were asked. Um, but did, our district was asked to do a presentation of, of some of the work that we're doing around the inclusionary practices. Um, so they spoke to the uh cross-curricular literacy strategies that we're doing, um, unit planning, the uh. Professional development that we're providing all our teachers on the universal design for learning. So a lot of what you've heard our. Principals share with you, they were up there sharing with everybody else that was in a very large room wanting to learn from our coaches.
Question. How long have they been doing this?
They, the uni- uh, the U D L or the?
Yeah, this whole um approach.
Um, as a state, we have been focusing on the, the uni- uh, universal design for learning approach for four years. That's when it really became popular, but um there was work on that before. I think as a district, we started about. Four years ago, three years ago, nineteen, nineteen twenty. Oh, so you know that because that was when we had COVID. Yes. That's right. We did our first, um, first meet in January of two thousand and nineteen in person and then a lot of zooms after that. That's right. I was there as well. Yes. So, so four years, it's been a real focus of the state and there's been lots of professional learning. From the state doing that. And uh, just updating our strategic plan. So we did, as I had mentioned to you, modified our dates and times. On May twenty-ninth is going to be our first meeting for our strategic plan, plan core team. And that'll be at the high school in the library. Um, we have forty people that are gonna be on the core team that we've uh that have signed up. We are still willing to take other people if they would like to come. Um, but the rest of the dates are there. So you see we're meeting on the twenty-ninth and then on the eighteenth. And then we wait and we go, we, we gather and on the twenty-first and then September the eighteenth and then if we need to meet on the second, we will. There are other teams that are meeting as well. There's an instructional team that's meeting and we'll be doing some work that we'll take back to the core team. Um, and tomorrow or, or at that first meeting on May twenty-ninth. We're gonna, going to be sharing what the process will look like and then spending a significant amount of time looking at data. So that everybody at the table can get to know um what's going, you know, what are we talking about? Where, where are we? Finding successes and where do we have some challenges that we need to continue to, to work to um help our kids close those gaps? If anybody is interested, there is a sign up code there or um they can just call and we will. Put them in on the team. We want everybody who would like to be there. Right now, we do have a, a good representation of stakeholders from throughout the community. I have not found a homeschool parent though that would like to join that. So that was one of my goals and I haven't found anybody willing. Oh, Andrea says she might have one, so. The next one is on, on. Our bond next steps and we do have a survey out there uh for bond feedback. So if anybody um. Would, well, everybody who would like to provide some information on the, on the bond and just give us some feedback. There's um, it's a. Not real long survey, but it is a longer survey, but people don't have to answer all the questions. They can answer what they feel like doing. There's some open-ended questions at the end. So if they prefer just to answer the beginning questions that are, you know, select a box or tell us. Um, where do you fall on this um scale? Then they can do that and then leave the open-ended questions. But we're sharing that, we'll be sharing it out with all of our families, but I'm really trying to get it out to the communities as well. So if you have ideas for how to. Get it out to the community more, let me know. It'll be in our newsletter that's going out, uh, the paper newsletter. So um people can see it there. Um, we'll put it on Facebook, some things like that. Graduation. So we have two graduations coming up. You have cap and gowns. That were close to you when you, when you sat down tonight. Um, heart graduation is at six thirty on the seventh. It will happen before we meet again. So this is just around the corner, right, Grace? Here, right? Heart graduation is right out back here. Uh, we will have a big white tent that uh will have tables and chairs set up. So I, you can't miss it. Um, and then on the twelfth, we are at Saint Martin's.
The ninth.
The ninth, yes. You can read, now it's corrected. There we go. June ninth.
And that's at Saint, Saint Martin's?
I was trying to trick Grace. Sorry, Grace. You're gonna be there, aren't you? Uh, June ninth, it's at Saint Martin's. Two o'clock is the start time. I would recommend getting there. Quarter after one, one-thirty at the latest for. And then um we'll gather out in the, they, the kids all gather to the room right to the right when they enter. So. We'll be right around there. And then we'll.
Same as last year, right?
Yep. Same as last year, yes. Gunner was seventeenth. Nice. And that's in the, in the mile or in the. That was his time.
Not as good as he would like. I don't think any of us can look for.
The next slide is just our upcoming dates and. There's a lot of ones. So strategic plan on the twenty-ninth. Egg drop, if you wanna stop by Grand Mountain on the fifth of June. Kelly, what time to start?
It goes all day. Sound exaggeration.
I asked what time it started. I didn't ask what it is.
Start with egg dropping usually around ten-ish. And then I think the barbecue starts at ten forty-five-ish. Because we have longer lunchtimes to allow for families to come and join. It's quite a.
Is it all grades or just the top grade?
Yeah, we focus on fifth grade. So the other, third and fourth grade goes out and watches and then we used to do third, fourth and fifth over three days. But Rochester's just, we just grown too much at Grand Mountain and it's just too difficult to manage all of that and parents. Then can come on one day for the, it's a family barbecue. We're all third, fourth and fifth grade on one day. So that was another challenge was if they have a third and a fifth grader, they have to take two days off work because, you know, they didn't wanna choose between children. So it's um, it's worked. We started doing that as we came back after COVID. Once we started doing egg drop again. Um, we did a building survey and, and went to fifth grade. So third and fourth still have the experience, but. They dropped the egg in fifth grade and it's a STEM project in fifth grade.
The entry of celebrations at eight thirty, not seven thirty.
Oh, okay.
Although if you were parking at seven thirty. But we don't start. School starts.
Um, so the egg drop is there. You can drop by and if you've not been to the egg drop in a while. Kind of fun just to go and see the kids doing it.
And hamburgers for lunch.
And hamburgers for lunch. There you go. Day of Champions, that's the day Laura, Laura shared and talked with you about. It's over at Yellum. It's the high school. It's a big football stadium and I think it's right back behind the high school. Um. But uh, that takes place right about ten o'clock is when it starts and then they end at one, but. Uh, if you're planning on going, let me know and I'll make sure that Laura or I meet you and get you down on the field so you can actually. Connect with the kids. All right. Um, G M E S has a spring concert is one forty-five right time?
Yep, um, and it's fifth grade, it's a fifth grade concert.
Fifth grade concert?
Western theme this year.
Ooh, so. Uh, senior awards night, that'll be at the high school. You can go and, that Grace is gonna be.
I hope so, I'm not Victorian.
I hope so too. Are you not Victorian? See that now it comes out. Congratulations.
Hopefully I won't.
Are you sure?
I am sure.
Here is, congratulations Grace. That's very, very cool.
Yeah, is this the? Is this where the community comes in?
This is where the, the community, a lot of, a lot of members of the community or organizations give scholarships. Yep.
Yeah.
So senior award tonight on the sixth, then there's heart graduation on the seventh, then there's graduation on the ninth. And then we have a work session on the twelfth. And then if you wanna wake up. Nice and early, like we said, if you want parking, you can be at the middle school by seven thirty for the eighth grade celebration. And then we're gonna come back and do strategic plan work on the eighteenth of June. So a busy month from here to. The middle of June. And that's what I have for you. So is there any questions?
So anybody who likes to leave?
Oh, yes, go, go for it.
We know how many kids are graduating.
Um. I don't know the exact.
It's like a little over like a hundred and sixty.
Nine sixteen?
Yeah, uh, I think a hundred and sixty. I don't.
One six zero or one one.
I think that's a little high. I think that's.
I think it's, I don't know. That's what my C S R teacher said, but I don't, I can't see that many people in my grade.
I think it's closer to a hundred and thirty. Thirty, one thirty, one thirty-eight, something like that. I'll get the exact number.
Thanks ladies. Hundred point six I count, yeah. All right.
Pulling up the first one then?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, so if you, once he introduces it, we do have a coach here to.
Is it, this is Court Lane?
Yes.
Yep. Are you gonna?
If, if you go ahead and introduce it, then we can.
I don't have any attachment.
Nope, they don't have attachment. So this is. Well, there's attachments to your information, but he doesn't have that. We, we won't be putting it up on the screen.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, first bit of business is the out of state trip request.
So this is a out of state trip request for the basketball team. Um, Caleb Sells. Who's our new basketball coach. Welcome to the job and glad to have you. Um, is here if you do have any, any questions, but this was something that came to our attention. Um, it happens. Uh, June twenty-first and twenty-third, which is before we meet again. So that's why we put it on the agenda for the last minute. And Caleb is here to answer any questions.
Yeah, come up and so if we got any, anybody has any questions, where is this um? Mapt, where is that at?
Mapton is just outside of Yakima. It's a small town just on the other side. It's a tournament put on by a small school coach. And it's basically a tournament for other one B, two B, one A schools to be able to get together and get a lot of games in for relatively cheap. So that Mapton tournament, uh, the cheapest part of it is the uh, where we stay. We're gonna be staying at the school. Um, it's in one of the classrooms. We did classroom like this one would be Rochester's classroom. Bring your sleeping bags, bring your air mattresses. No hotel fees, no air and B and Bs, nothing like that. So a nice expense that weekend will be feeding the boys. So.
So where um, where are you thinking about feeding them at?
So uh, well, sometimes it's gonna be peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and sometimes it might be a trip to Olive Garden. And so we're trying to budget for rough estimate thirty dollars a day per kid, um, ten dollars per meal, knowing that sometimes we'll stay way under that. With like group feeding them, like us going to the store and picking up supplies and some nights it might be going out to the hot pizza spot in town. Where that is in Metzen, I don't know. I do know a few people that are there so I can get some hot tips, but Yakima is also not too.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to this tournament, get five games in against some other like level teams and, you know, new coach. So really give me a chance to, you know, find out. You know, what we got going on. Um, go, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you. Um, I think it's fantastic thing going. I mean, I don't, can't get enough time in, right? But how do you, how many kids you taking and how, have you already chosen varsity?
So, so we're starting practice on Tuesday. Um, and then we've got our first tournament next weekend in Centralia. And we're doing that varsity and J V. And then there's another tournament the following weekend also at Centralia. It's also varsity and J V. So between those two weekends. Both the varsity and the JV will get ten games in, which is uh quite a bit for the first two. And so then for this one, we're only wanna take one team. And there'll be some, some kids won't be able to go like on the varsity because they've got baseball, football, their commitments to it. We want kids playing every sport. That's kind of one of our big pushes. But the ones that are available might be five or six varsity kids and two of the top JV kids. I wanna take maybe eight, nine kids. We didn't want to playing time. I don't wanna bring twelve kids and have them just sitting on the pine the whole time. Um, and so two or three coaches, eight, nine, ten kids. Uh, take one team over and for both trips. That's my plan for the two longer trips.
So these are kids that played last year.
Most of them, yes. We will have some eighth graders that are gonna be freshmen next year that'll be participating in the JV activities. But most of those kids probably won't be um going with us on this trip unless there's that one superstar that stands out and we wanna see a little more. That's the, next week will be a big eye opener for me. I haven't seen much of these boys play. Uh, most of these kids were fourth graders in my fourth grade class. Back in the day, a few parent teacher comments with you.
I wish Cooper was gonna be, we're gonna have to hold him back a year, I guess.
But um, so just trying to get them a little extra experience. My understanding, cause I have one of the previous assistant coaches from last year. Uh, with me this year, uh, high school math teacher, I believe. Um, and I asked him, what'd you guys do last year? He said, we had a few practices. We're like three kids showed up. Basically shooting practice and they went to a tournament in that Evergreen State College. And basically after that, the coach canceled the summer. So basically we're looking for wins early, not W's on scoreboard, but. Kids showing up, kids playing, kids getting excited about basketball again. That's kind of the whole goal. Um, one of the reasons I applied for this job was this group of seniors. Um, cause a lot of them were in my fourth grade class way back in the day, way back in the day. The graders are actually starting to come in on the gym. Um, and I wanna send them out with a good experience. I think there's more talent there than their record has showed the last few years. And I think uh, we've got some systems and things in place that we can do to try to maximize um their talent, their potential, but also their experience.
There used to be some restrictions I thought about coaches and players during the offseason. Is that kind of?
So, so the window uh for me, I can't uh touch these kids, talk to these kids, coach these kids. Um, until the baseball state tournament is over, which will conclude this weekend. So. Monday actually would be the first day I'd be able to do it, but it's Memorial Day and I'm not that crazy enough to schedule practice on Monday. So um, I originally did, not really. I had to make a little adjustment, just like in fourth grade. Kids forget that answer. And so June, July, as much as we want, as much as the kids wants, as much as we want. I'm trying to just confine that to June. Give them July a little summer vacation. I'd like to have a little summer vacation too. And then August, it's hands off. Unless you're football, fall sports, and then they can start to. See, I'm learning this W A stuff pretty quick. Most of my background's in college. Um, I've been teaching here my fourteenth year, my first year in fifth, thirteen and fourth. Um, but my. Uh, eighteen years of coaching experience, but my last twelve have been at the college level, uh, women's Centralia Community College, six as the assistant, six as head coach. So. I learned a lot of this high school stuff at the fly, which is also why you have a last minute thing in front of you at the board meeting. I saw. Um, between these two things, uh, the, the forms that I've sent in, um, they're not complete. They're very much a rough draft. Because I have not registered us for these tournaments yet, because I don't wanna make commitments to these coaches and I have to say, never mind, I can't come. And so once I commit to those, once I get permission, I'm a big ask for permission, not forgiveness guy. Um, then I can get they, then they'll give me the schedule. You're playing at nine o'clock, twelve o'clock, three o'clock. Then we can really plan our trip and our days and our meals and everything else and the other activities around those things. And so between the two trips, um, the first one, the Mapton one, very practical, uh, pretty cheap. Um, free housing, um, Yakima, not too far away. Easy get over there and get back, especially in the summer, no snow, not. Um, the second one is more of the, I've heard the term a lot, tonight shoot for the move. It's the. It's the one where as of right now, I don't think we have the money in our fundraising account to do it. So it'd be like something where we have to put together a quick fundraiser to do that. But it's Court Lane, I think of Silverwood Theme Park. I think of, well, everyone loves Court Lane, a lot of fun things to do over there, so. The whole object this summer, um, I was told not to get too rambunctious, but I'm getting a little rambunctious. Um, with my plans for this summer. Like this is stuff I should be probably doing next year after I've had a year to kind of settle in, learn the kids, learn the systems and everything. Uh, we spent, we shared a lot of emails today. We got very familiar. Um, but again, these seniors, this is their last year. And so try and give them their best one. So I'm probably gonna have to pick between one of these two. But as of which one, I don't know yet. Um, I have enough interest from people that have a team, a competitive team for both of these. But again, it might just have to come down to. Which one are we gonna do? So that's why I put both of them in front of you. And again, just trying to give these kids a good experience.
You may have to choose because of interest or money?
Money, money. So uh, as of right now, um, the fundraiser, the special funds count that I inherited had twenty-four hundred dollars in it. I spent half of that to get our varsity and JV in the last, in the next two tournaments in Centralia. Um, so I have roughly twelve hundred left. Uh, my rough estimate on the Mapton tournament's about thirteen hundred dollars. And so that's pretty close. Uh, my rough estimate for the uh, Court Lane one would be closer to twenty-four. And so, you know, I have to, have to, you know, come up with some money, but you know, we have ways of doing that. Um, or we just, you know, even saying, you know what? Had a really good summer with being able to go on just one of these trips and something that can really springboard us into November. And I'm also working on scheduling some um, basically free games with Masi Rock, Toledo, Napavine, adding a lot of the local teams where. They come to Rochester, I go there, we get together, we blow the whistle. It's completely free, just kids run up and down the court, just getting more basketball in.
So you, you, you said you coached at Centralia?
I did.
How about a scrimmage? Centralia basketball. More, can't do that?
With the college?
I, I don't know the rules. Is some kind of the mind?
Looking for affirmation too, but.
I saw him shaking his head, but I mean, he could have had. I'm just, just curious, you know, something. They get a little.
Well, so, so the first two tournaments that you're going to are, are they at the hub?
They're at the, yep, they're actually tournaments I used. Well, three hundred dollars per team. So that adds up between the four.
Okay, so that's, that's taken care of. So you're, you still have twelve hundred and you need, how much if you go to both?
Um, in order to go to both, uh, another twenty-five hundred to make both things happen. And that's just based on my rough estimates.
In addition to the twelve hundred.
And, and I'm not, I'm not here asking for money, then I'm just asking for permission to seek.
I'm, I'm just thinking.
You wouldn't turn it down.
I would not.
I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't know where money comes from here, but um, I guess it grows on trees.
My stock portfolio is not one of those places.
Well, it'd be super great if you could do both.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna try. We're gonna try to make.
And I know they're really close. If you're looking at the dates, they're really.
It's, yeah, it's, it's go one weekend, turn around, come back and then.
And you have a buy-in, do you think, from the, from the players yet?
So we sent out, we had a parent meeting, uh, tried to get as close to the end of baseball season as we could. I didn't want to step on uh, Coach Hornstrom's toes at all while he was trying to focus on their run. Um, and so I sent, had a meeting. Um, gave them almost like a menu of tournaments and stuff and asked them to kind of, hey, tell me which ones you guys would be interested in going to. And these are the ones we got the most interest in. Um, there was other places like Bend, East Wenatchee, that kind of stuff. So this is really kind of the ones that I got the most interest in buy-in. And because, you know, that's a big deal. I don't want to show up to a tournament and all of a sudden I've got five kids. That's no fun for anybody. So that's why these ones kind of were the ones that made the cut. And that's, we just kind of went from that. Trying to get as much parent student feedback as we can and kind of use that to kind of help me make my decisions this summer. Um, my goal next year, after having a year to do this and kind of learn my team and the middle school kids coming up, I want to have all this done by the end of March. Next year, that's, I'd rather be way ahead of the game than kind of almost in scramble mode, which is kind of where I am now, but that is what it is. You deal with it and just move forward. But yeah, it's just kind of where we're at right now. Just trying to get these kids as many games in the summer as we can. I'm putting in. My bread and butter offense that I used in the college and it's gonna take these guys some time to learn it. Um, I've got kind of a funky zone defense I like to run. It's gonna take them some time to learn it. The more practices and games I can get this summer. The better off we're gonna be. And I'm fine with Messi. Messi in November, some, summer is gonna be great. It's just gonna make them all the more better when we um, start off in November. That's pretty good uh, grammar from elementary school.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the overnight trip for basketball team?
So move.
A second? Any discussions? No discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you. Um, speaking of egg drop, can I make a quick story about Miss Hannah Roadheaver? I've been my favorite one. It's, it's evolved very much over the years into kids actually trying to make contraptions that actually save the egg. But you know, nine, ten years ago, it was chaos. We're throwing watermelon and pumpkins off the roof and it was a lot of fun. Um, and we've actually bringing up back that a little bit this year. It's gonna be very much still like STEM science related. But kids are also being encouraged to bring a second fun one to school. And as far as fun ones go, um, Hannah showed up to school one day with watermelons, turned around this way and she's just smirking. She's about probably as red as mine are right now. And she turns it around and on the other side of watermelon, it's a big old picture of Mr. Self. When me and Mr. Easily toss that thing off the roof, just the utter joy in her face. It was kind of disturbing to be honest. It was, it was a lot of fun. So yeah, if you get a chance to stop with the egg drop, it's. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, um. This is the. Equipment donation from the uh, Chehalis School District. Uh, district donated three pallets. Of small, oh, small, uh, small engines. Uh, fifteen hundred bucks. And we need an approval to accept that donation. Move to approve, accept the equipment donation. Second?
A second.
Second? Any discussion? Something like no? All those in favor? Any opposed? No opposed? Motion is passed. I bet you he's happy about that. I'm just thinking about myself. Okay, uh, next one is uh, grant money awarded to. Caitlin Beasley. Pronounce that correctly.
Grant Lana, great, Caitlin actually applied for the Ellison Grant and they have um, awarded or, or said that they would donate. Five thousand plus dollars for intervention materials to use with fourth grade students.
Okay, um. Motion to approve? So move?
Second? Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Uh, all in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Opposed? Motion is passed. Excuse me. Okay, um, this is the one we have to. Okay, so this is our one that we have to sign every. Every year. Okay, uh. So.
Only if we want to play other schools.
Yeah, so this, this is the agreement that we have with W A that we will adhere to their rules and. Um, they allow them to regulate, arrange for our competitions for our kids.
Okay, uh, motion to approve? So moved? A second? Somebody say, second, second. Okay, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? No opposed? Motion passed. Okay, this one is um. Meal approval, or excuse me, prove the meal price increase by ten cents.
Yes, it's ten cents for students in the increase for lunches and. Uh, for breakfast, ten cents increase. It's twenty-five cents for the lunch for adults. And thirty cents increase for breakfast for adults. There is a possibility that we will have free lunch for all students next year. We're in the final stages of approval for that. Um, with the C E P for all. We're hoping that happens, but it's not finalized yet.
And it's not looking.
How was that? Was that gonna be like statewide or just?
Just us. So O S P I publishes rules that they say are eligible. And we were on that list, but then we have to provide them data. An actual list to match their numbers. Well, they're, I'm not sure where their numbers come from because it said we had twenty-three hundred students in our buildings. And we don't. So I'm, I'm having a hard time getting the data to match.
Well, and Aaron was saying that last week it was looking okay, but then now we're not.
And these increases of.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
These increases. I know we were at a place a while back where we had to increase a little bit. Because we hadn't been or something.
For the same reason.
Is the same thing.
And it, it's called paid lunch equity. And what it is, is they want to make sure so that federal government reverses us for lunch and breakfast. For free and early students. And they want to make sure that we're charging paid students at least the same amount. That they're giving us money for. So um, they give us more than what our prices are gonna be, but you only have to increase it ten cents. At a time, um, but that's why they're doing it.
You talking with the O S P I?
It, it, they're federal regulations. It's a U, yeah, USDA. I don't have a contact there.
You mean about the numbers?
Yeah, the number.
But the.
The numbers. How do we fix those? How do we, I mean, because they obviously get the wrong data.
They do, um. I've reached out to them. Do it a couple more times.
Or not.
No, I mean, they tell, but I, I think it, they issue it so lots of people see this document. And it's gonna stay on their website all year and they're gonna look and say Rochester's supposed to be free. But why are you not?
Is there a chance that the middle school might qualify?
The numbers are better for the high school than the middle.
Are they really?
I, I, I thought in the years past, it was. We were good for primary, elementary and middle school and not, and not high school.
The middle school and high school have never qualified.
Okay, well, yeah, so it was the other school. I, I knew the high school wasn't. So I couldn't remember about the middle school.
Our elementaries will continue to be.
And heart.
And heart. We're gonna be free for all the kids.
Okay, okay. So uh, do we um, have a motion to approve a ten cents increase? Do I need to read the whole thing?
We need a motion for, to approve the prices as published.
We need a motion to approve the prices as published.
So move.
A second please? Second? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? No opposed? So the move is approved? I was looking for a different. Different word. Up here. Okay, so um. Uh, this one is to summon the teachers working out of their. Side areas. Endorsement.
I got a different word in my head.
Okay, so a motion to approve uh, resolution twenty-three. Dash fourteen uh, for the assignment of teachers to classes other than their. Uh, area or areas of endorsement.
Is, is this to? For all or is it, there's the two highlighted at the bottom of those additions?
The highlighter new, because you approved this resolution in August. And we're adding to it.
So that's why I thought I'd like, I knew we had already. I thought we had already, it seemed like yesterday that we approved this.
It was August.
Yeah, that was yesterday, in my mind. That moved to approve. Uh, I get a second please? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? No opposed? Motion is passed, approved. Now. Out of state. Okay, so now we are going to the. The improvement of the superintendent to go out of state. Since I messed that up at the beginning here. So, um. So uh, this is to approve overnight, overnight travel for superintendent to attend a. Free Education Research and Development Institute. Twenty twenty-four in Salt Lake City. Uh, seventh through the tenth. Of July. Uh, could I get a, a motion to approve? A second? Any discussion?
Enjoy.
Enjoy.
I'll be back by the board meeting.
Okay, uh, all those in favor? Any opposed? No opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Okay, last thing, oh, comment, alright. Nothing else, nothing else?
No one online and no one's, what's up?
Okay, uh, unless there's anything else, anybody got it? Meeting is adjourned. Twenty seventeen.